Board to head with the steering team work. Leaving now.
Okay, all right. Chair Gilli, our Vice Chair, Mr. Berger, our members of the board, Steve's guests and steering team members. It's an honor to be with you this evening. To talk about the strategic plan that we are in the process of developing. So a strategic plan is basically starts with what our mission is, why do we exist? And then it moves to what is, what are our values? What is it that we value most? And then it moves to the vision of how do we then get to use those values to the place where we want it to be. And so it involves some strategies, strategizing. This has been going on since January. And we've so, and who's involved in it? Well, so far it's been thirteen hundred and thirty returned surveys and eighty plus members and different focus groups. And we witnessed lots of focus groups. And of course, now it's a point of taking the data, kind of looking at it and deciding, you know, how do we actually operationalize it? So in the end, the strategic plan, basically, it's a five to seven year plan that says where we're going and how we're going to get there. And what we all, and everything we do focuses around that. So the work that we've been involved with, you've been involved with is extremely important. And we're, as we kind of get toward the final leg of this, tonight, we'll have an opportunity to start to dot the i's and cross the t's. And so we really appreciate you being here. With that, I just want to thank Allison and Sally in particular for the, all the time that's been spent from the very beginning. And I'd like to now turn the time to Sally.
Well, thank you. It's great that we're all here working together tonight. We're partnering that, Allison and I, and we will be walking through a few things. As you see the agenda here, we're going to try to stick to our timeline as much as we can, but we also want to make sure we end with some great movement and work forward. We're excited to work with the board and team this up. This is really a great opportunity and probably a very unique one to have everybody come together. And so just really appreciate that, that we have a board who wants to be engaged and connected in this process with all of us. So, so we're going to start with Jay. He already did the five W's. And then we're going to move into the overview of the process. So because some of us have not been all at the table for the process, I'm just going to quickly review that, a roadmap of what has happened so far. So this slide up here, you have to turn those slides. Thank you. So this slide is basically our timeline and the work that's been done so far when we kicked off the work, how we involve the community through some of the things that Jay, Mr. Brower just shared, with surveys, with focus groups and planning teams. We worked through steering team kickoff, which is who's joining us tonight. And then design phases that we worked through in October and November, which we, just to where we are tonight, working session to really focus in on our mission and vision and review our values. The process used was design thinking. Our consultants led us through this process where we worked through each stage of the work to design and develop our plan based on the data we received, both the strengths and also areas for growth. Mr. Brower already captured the data about how many surveys and focus groups we had, how many people have participated along the way. So our strategic plan has multiple parts and overview as we focus today on our vision and mission. Our vision that we're going to be working on drafting today is about where we are headed. And our mission is where are we currently? So we also have, you have values. We worked on values as a team, took quite a bit of time to work on that. And we have a couple of people who maybe speak to some of that work. And then we have our focus areas or pillars. So we also like to have, we'll have, let's see, first Jay or Beth here is willing to say a few words about the process.
I, just a few words, that's all, right? I thought there was excellent representation. It was great to see that there were community members, staff members, and different types of staff members, teachers, the administration, students and parents were all engaged in the process. We came together at the beginning and evaluated the survey data, which helped us understand the community feedback and value. So I just thought that we started with a really great foundation of representation. And the process was really well organized. The facilitators were great communicators and they did a really good job, I felt, of bringing us all together and kind of bringing us out of our shells and getting the best out of the team that we could produce. And my other takeaway was just, just how evident it was that there's immense amount of care from this community and everyone involved, or the students, and that we all want a great outcome for the school and for our students.
Okay, I just, I loved the entire process and was very thankful that I was, you know, that I got to be a part of this and also get to meet so many wonderful people in the community. So last year is my first year teaching and I was looking for opportunities to be able to help out more and get to know the community. Because even though I technically live in Eatonville, like this whole, you know, the whole process of working with other educators and community members is new to me. So it was really nice to get to meet all the different types of people that we have here who have different careers and get to know everyone. Because I think that everybody had very valuable opinions and, you know, really good effort to be able to come up with this strategic plan and to be able, to be a part of a process that's going to help Eatonville for so many years to come. I'm very thankful for that because, you know, as, you know, educators and community members, we all want best for the students. And I think that if we're all acting on the values that we came up with, like success will follow. Because every decision that we make has to be made with those values and intentions in mind. So I think that we all did a great job and we're very organized. And the company that we used to be able to walk us along that process, I think, was very helpful.
Well, thank you to both of you for adding that feedback. And I'll invite anyone else who's been part of this process to feel free to jump in as we go through the next series of slides. One thing I did want to comment is that education elements, the two consultants in particular, who we've been working with, Lauren and Sarah, they did say several times that this group in particular, that they've worked with, and they do this all across the country, they just gave kudos to all of the, the members around the table, that this group is so thoughtful and passionate. And they were really impressed with some of the work that has been produced along the way with this particular group. So thank you to everyone. Not only have they spent hours on this, but days. So this has been a lot of time devoted to something so significant. So thank you to everyone for being part of it. In front of you, you will find a few handouts. So we just wanted you to have some paperwork in front of you. So one of the things that we're going to go through tonight, we're going to reference here. So as we get to those documents, we'll let you know when we're, when we're there. So the next part of this is just kind of like the overview. So if you can imagine a building, the, the top is the mission, after the mission is the vision, and then we have our values. And then below that are pillars. We've also been using the word focus area. So that's been interchanged between pillar and focus area. And then under those pillars are different objectives and metrics of how we measure those and different initiatives to get to those objectives. So we're going to kind of walk through where we're currently at with these. But before we do that, we just kind of wanted to walk through the questions that relate to each of these components. So within the strategic plan, by the time we're done, we hope to have a mission that explains why we exist, why we're doing what we're doing. After that, our vision is to address where we're going, our values and what our beliefs are, the pillars or focus areas. I don't think we've actually determined which phrase we're going with. There was a lot of discussion around that. But that's how we will prioritize our time for the next two to five years. And then our impact statements or our metrics is how we're going to evaluate or measure our success. And then our strategic objectives are what we're aiming to accomplish within each of the specific pillars. And then our initiatives is how we will achieve those objectives. So the next part is where you will be able to look at the first handout. The title of that is community and belonging. So this is, if you want to call it pillar one. And then within that, the steering team came up with the definition of what community and belonging means. And then there's strategic objectives that go along with that. So this was a lengthy process that a particular group within, within the room here, they spent a bulk of the day on crafting this. And then we went through a series of other meetings where additional community members and staff members gave, provided feedback. And then there was another revision. So along the way, this has been looked at by various groups. And so after community and belonging, you'll see preparation for life. This did have a revision. It was called life skills or real world problems, something along those lines. And I think it's been revised to preparation for life now is where we landed with that one. And then next on the back, student academic success. Pillar four, communication, trust and transparency. And then on the last page, pillar five, health and wellness. And I would like to add that the board would like to address fiscal responsibility. So there is pillar six, so you'll find that in a different handout. It's just formatted a little bit differently. But that will take us through our pillars. So there are six pillars.
And this, you all addressed this at our last meeting. So that's exactly what you came up with, is what we captured.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Rhonda, for adding that. Okay, so that will take us to our values. So I'm going to turn it over to Sally or am I going to?
So the values. Values and the vision are on the same page. Want to make sure we cut that.
Okay, so if you want to go to the values. So this process actually took at least half a day, if I recall. Members of this team probably remember the lengthy discussion and how we got here. So the values are our guardrails. And the, the way this work was really interesting, we were handed from our consultants, a piece of paper with various words on them. And then they took us through a process where we had to identify what words on this paper and highlight or circle the 10 most valuable words to you. And then narrowed it down to five and then three. And then we did, we did a lot of talk around those words. And then once we got to these five words, then we defined what these words meant to us. So that was the process we went through. And I found that process to be really enlightening. And I thought that's where a lot of the, the talk and the great discussions really came from. And so that's how we got to these values. I don't know if anybody else on the team wanted to contribute to that process and how that felt going through it.
It's true. So I noticed that when we were trying to determine which values we were going to narrow it down to, we all had a lot of the same values, but we may have used different word choice. So during, throughout our discussions, that's how we determined like which ones we were going to ex on, how we could combine them together to get the most important ones. So I think it was definitely a good group effort to get to that point.
That's a great point. A lot of the words were similar that people selected. Yeah, that's very true.
Oh, I'll comment on the one that I was, that I was a part of. When I look at the values, the team that I was linked up with was for community. And seeing this back in front of me spelled out and on so many slides, which you can't get lost when you're going back and forth through slides, seeing it on paper reminds me of how great the process was because we, in, in realizing kind of how some things were similar and it helped us to really actually, the values focus our language on community and what that meant. Seeing this down in front of me reminds me that we now need to do even more work to go back and now make our strategic objectives, rematch our values. Because currently, when I look at this, they don't really line up anymore. So work still needs to be done on that. But I really love the values that we came up with because that was, that was great.
Thank you for that, Kami.
Can I just give a perspective? I was not part of the value structure when you guys originally came up with these words. So as a board member, I just got a slide that says, here's the values. And when I looked at the words, I thought, that's interesting. I wonder how they got to those. I didn't understand the meaning behind them. And then like, some of the pillars were combined. And so when I was able to sit down and listen to you develop the definitions behind the values, it made all the difference in the world. I gained a greater understanding. And I think the reason that that is important is if we were to just put these five words up on a wall, it would mean nothing to our community. But the definitions behind them really bring focus and light to, I think, and broaden the perspective and I think bring value to values.
Well stated.
I just throw in also, and it was also interesting that, you know, this is Eatonville. And, and so if there's a sheet that has a whole bunch of values on it, it didn't always perfectly match. And so there were two or three times where we were looking at it and going, wait a minute, this is something that's Eatonville, it's not up there. And so this is not, this wasn't just a cookie cutter thing where we did a multiple choice and threw it out in the middle. This was something where there was a lot of work and we actually came up with a couple of our own, our own, you know, values that just matched Eatonville and what we are, who we are. So I feel like we own this one, which makes me feel good. Makes me feel like we'll really use it.
That's a great point. Yeah. Mr. Brower was right. There were, I think there was at least two, maybe three words that weren't on their original sheet of words. So we, we added more to their sheets, maybe for that. So now we're going to shift gears and kind of hone in on the mission. So Sally's going to explain this part, but there are handouts that will ask for you to be prepared to even have a writing utensil throughout this exercise. We do have boxes near you, so if you don't have a writing utensil, hopefully we can pass those off the ground.
Okay, so we're going to start off with mission. And you have the five objectives on paper. You're going to ask that you take a look at those. Remember that these were created by different groups. First draft mission. Okay, she's making a face and then. So we're going to, we're going to read through these. And then we have the first activity. Remember, we are going to do what we are already good at. So remember, our mission is what we are already good at, what our strengths are. As you look at these five draft statements, we want you to think on your own and write on this paper, what do you like about them? What do you wish about them? And what do you wonder? And then we're going to put those, put those thoughts on paper. And we're going to begin to draft. Next up, next we're going to break into groups and draft some draft statements for a mission. So we do a couple of minutes to look through those and complete at least a couple of statements we need.
I'm sorry, Sally, did you say that you wanted us to do that for every, all five of these?
Look at them as a group.
As a group.
As a group. And then write down general statements about what you like.
Okay.
And what you wish and what you want. Thank you for the clarifying question. So we're going to take two more minutes. Keep moving through the process. So if you could finish your last thoughts on paper. Okay. So our next part of the process is we're going to divide into three groups. And we want you to think about these statements along with what you've written under, I like, I wish, or I wonder. We're going to ask you to compile into one mission, draft mission statement for your group. And then we're going to put up one and we're going to use that one as our starting point and begin to work through that process of creating our first strong draft. We hope to walk away tonight with a really strong draft of mission and vision as we end the day. So let's do three groups. We're not going to be able to move around the room, so you're going to have to maybe talk.
Can we slide inside the table? Like, can we come through and slide on the center of the table to work face to face?
And I'll just add that with what we currently have on the screen, everyone was a part of this process. However, if you want to just restart or if you want to revise and just take bits and pieces from others, feel free to do whatever you think is best.
Can I ask a question? Is this missions where we're headed for or where we are now?
This is our goal for the next five.
Some mission. Mission is where we are currently. Vision is where we are going. So shall we do groups? We want to do.
We can also spread out more too.
Yeah.
We, our board, okay. Do you want to join me over there?
And then can we break these two in half? Like, one, two, three, four, five. We can slide this two, five, four, five.
I will not. And I thought that was a thing that I wish. Because I think there is confusion about the difference between initiative and vision. And so I think if we need to make it, I would use the language to reflect that we see as our current status. So like, can we say to achieve, to inspire? That's a to do and that sounds flagrant. And so.
I agree.
I don't, I don't think we need to, I mean, I think, I think we do a lot of good things. And I think that that's, I mean, you think of any company, they all have mission statements and all. I think it should be. I think for me, like, we do want to portray ourselves in the best possible, but I don't think we're lying.
No, yeah. And I don't think we should say.
It's the underlying result of. First thing I have is student family, community partnerships. I think the Eagle School District is our mission. This is everything. And it needs to be tested for everybody, not just students. I really like that. The word I really like is inspire achievement. Not to create life, but we need to inspire people to take accountability or to help. Inspire people to. I like the word achievement, so it overgrowth. I think growth of student. Personally, I feel like combat work to me. Achievement is something that whether I work for.
I mean, you take the two out of the week.
I have community now and it's been done for three times.
That's a lot of great. What I was going to ask is, I mean, I think if you went and talked to teachers and you asked, is this the thing that you feel like you're trying to do? Is that why? For me, it is kind of trying to put it on. Make sure.
One thing I liked that a lot is that was everything. Great. And then also a lot of careful word choice in there, thoughtful word choice that, you know, how we talk about growth, having it like you have achieved so and so. That idea of preparing people to be respectable. But I also like building a stronger community. So you guys spoke about.
You guys, probably looking towards these, yeah, that's. It's a matter of.
Just kind of sleepwalking.
I kept saying, okay.
And I said, I wish for it to be short enough to be memorable. And I think also, thinking about what you said, is it shouldn't be.
Called out on the spot, it would actually prove it.
Remember, I'm not too much of a kid. How are they going to do that? How are they going to measure that?
Absolutely. I have our missions, inspire lifelong learners.
I feel like that was the correct.
Oh. Sorry. I don't know which one I would rather.
We're all. I'm sure it's on the wall.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're trying to.
That's very.
What we're doing. Or pre long life on the weekend.
They're going to. They're, we're going to go into the job force. As long as they're respectful.
To build our.
I can do a lot with just inspiring. There's a lot of kids. Be honest about this. There's a lot of kids who aren't going to go further or going to go into a trade school.
Already got at the source.
So yes.
And I noticed that Colleen just mentioned one time.
So like that leads me to my, I wish. And then if everybody else wants to add on. But I wish there was something about work ethic, perseverance, rich, something like that. Because I think embody.
That's why I said.
And that was.
I'm all about.
Maybe it's because I've been in the wrong time, but I talked to other people that have been. They want.
I'd like to know.
There are, you know. So I think that is something that matters. In my vault. Did you go to any other buildings?
What?
Do. What I do hear about is a comment.
Cause I said. Out of operation lines.
I'm like, dude, you're stuck. I'm not coming to get. That's not. That's not in my curriculum.
They did more to life.
Like it's. So when you.
I got work something.
Almost. Somebody else. Right.
So you like if we just.
Come on.
So are we ready? So you know.
One or two. One or two.
Were there any other references or anything we're missing? Is there anything?
Is there any?
Yeah. Is there anything that was not on here that we wish was on here? Is there anything that we're missing?
Inspiring.
Accountability.
So we should be thinking about moving into trying to craft a statement.
Huh? We're missing.
The stories. Strong relationships. Like create lifelong learners of the days.
Well, you know, third one there, it says creative partnership is key to support the growth of cultural. They've kind of got some of the right origins and the right partnerships.
I think. Inspire.
Opportunities.
This is what really helped me. We're working. Everything. This is what we want all of our. Pillars and everything to go. Those school districts.
Remember the mission.
It's just, well, yeah. And I don't think.
States.
Take us to refresh on one of the ways. Right.
That's why.
My view.
So you never got.
Okay. And so that's. Everybody's worried about that.
People like, of course, what are you going to do?
You know, like. You never know. No. Banning you. No, we don't have to. You know, so.
I think here's my. Where are achievements and collective accountability by.
Point. You want to make sure you use words that are.
Right. But I do like what you were saying with partnerships, the community piece, having growth in there.
And those goals. Are considered. What if you did like our lifelong learning learners by encouraging student growth through opportunities.
That's I just said, we inspire lifelong learners.
I will say my one complaint.
In a caring. Community based environment.
So encouraging. Growth opportunities.
Strong relationship. How about high level?
I mean.
I like that word in the first one.
Mission is. I think that the mission is. Missions.
That's what I.
Because I mean, I. I will switch my. That presentation. And the words. That make that shift. Opportunities.
Academic rigor.
All of the. Someone else. In my two decades plus of being in the classroom, I'm like. Starting to like grip my pencil, thinking this is different, but it's. I just got back, keep myself out of it. We're making our. Finding opportunities for both.
Verb adjective.
And the care now is coming from more. So. Holding more people in the decision. Inspired. I think opportunities for growth. By utilizing.
The last thing you said was we inspire lifelong learners.
Yeah.
I said, in a caring community.
So you, you just, you took out the trial, right? To inspire.
It's a four minute warning. We're going to regather and draft. The forty five.
I said it's inviting the opportunities.
So I have local partnerships or we get put in student family community. So it doesn't work.
And it's interesting, right? Because lifelong learners.
Families. Family. Students.
What else?
I'm.
We have talked a lot about health and wellness.
Because those are all words.
But does it?
You know. I started. It's changing. How can I learn to take care of? You know, all these different things. I enjoy working on my car, you know. Now I see a lifelong. Working.
Oh, I was gonna think so. That's. I love. And I think that's what. Like, yeah, there's.
You say, okay, if you look at lifelong, you're saying, would you take, take it into wellness?
Describe.
Everything else.
Sort of. Because once you explain it, then it would. So maybe we could sort of word like. I'm going old school. So those were words that we can.
But if you like. We can.
I do.
Yeah. Okay. I like my father. Cause I think that's more encompassing of everybody. It's, we can all be lifelong at any stage.
By providing opportunities for students, families and community members. So that there's.
Those are like.
Yeah. To become.
To become. Become.
That is. What do you think? Grace.
We'll have to fight for that one. And we will.
Oh, life is.
We will.
Don't tell.
So.
We didn't control.
I feel like.
Get inspired. Either we inspire.
Together we inspire. Together we.
Start every try every day. Ran out of time.
Yeah, I like that.
A daughter walked in my classroom and she looked at me.
I've got things to. Yeah.
We do. And they agree with it. It's right.
Now they're going to take it off.
What are we?
Oh, yes, they will.
Okay. I'll read it. I said, we inspire lifelong learners through opportunities for.
Well, I had a.
I think we want. We need something different to describe this.
We do have a.
Community focused. So we think the word. It's important.
Personal growth. We are good at community.
So again, it's, it's, it just keeps going between the heads. How would you feel about?
I do. I mean, I like. When we were doing.
Yes. Yes.
Sure that.
Been. I was crying. We're trying to be. Right. Pride. It's a fire.
And like that. Do you have a spectrum?
Well, it's, I mean, every. Oh, all classes. Sort of safety. Time that. Maybe it's. Maybe it's. For focus on that. So I think we can. Okay.
Tell them the bike.
My original.
Yeah.
That's two. Coming up with sentences for lifelong.
Okay.
He goes on.
They're out.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to get it out of the way.
Must be the most.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. We were. We inspire. Respectful lifelong learners.
You don't have to.
Opportunity.
I'm choosing.
Community focus.
Yeah, I was.
I'm sorry. I called him over there.
There's a.
Important. I. About three. For growth. In a.
See, they're using the same words a lot.
Yeah.
I've heard. I don't think that. I don't know. Oh, no, she was just working.
Actually, I changed all of them.
I'm sure it's better.
Did you?
We have another group ready to. Okay, let's hear it. If you want to just read it off. I've since been typing.
I mean, did you have the right off? You did. All right.
I think it's crazy.
It's a capitalistic way.
I have.
Sometimes. Some positions right.
Don't judge my. I can. Something will be happening. Yeah. That's what I'm saying. Would anybody else like some water while I'm up? Since I know you're all stuck.
I'll take one of those. Thank you. Are we going with shame? Like.
Thank you.
There is for me.
Behind the three people.
Like that too.
So that's, that's what.
We'll give you that word. That's fine. Everybody still. How many groups did we have? Three? Three groups? No, like man, it's like, I'm watching out.
So you two are advocates.
So don't we start with the first one? By our first group, you want to read it and comment?
I don't. And then sorry, you're, you're, you're calling up.
Read it.
So we said, together we inspire achievement through personal growth and accountability by providing opportunities for students, families and community members to become lifelong learners. Basically, we really like the accountability part of it because it, it always falls back on the person itself or the, the group itself. And with the, we are providing the opportunities. We're trying to help not just the students, but we're trying to incorporate the families and the families eventually go into the communities. So we want to bring everybody into the group, not just solely focused on the students and to be lifelong learners because you don't just stop learning. Once you graduate school, you continue to learn after, whether that's in college or just in your day to day jobs or just after you're retired, just becoming a better person.
Really? Do you want to add?
I have to agree with them fully. You did a great job on explaining it.
But we did miss the word respectful, which I think number two. I can heartily thumbs up.
That you was. Number two.
My reading also. We inspire respectful lifelong learners through opportunities for growth in a caring, community focused environment. We had conversation around the word mission being our current status. And so we thought it was important to try and make it sound like and reflect what we currently do. We talked a little bit about if you were to go and talk to teachers, would they think this is things that they were doing? We didn't initially have the word respectful in there and had a conversation about that that was a super important word and where that might go. So it landed. We were not necessarily 100% sold on the phrase community focus, but also I'll realize that community is a super important thing to us and then to the members of this community. I mean, it comes up all the time. And I talked about in my building, which is a middle school, comes up a lot that we do things the way that we do here in this community and we value that. Not that we're opposed to other ideas, but it's really something that we're all rooted in. Anything that has.
Um, I would say the only thing that added me like the community is it was in a lot of the other drafts. So we just thought that obviously we're, we are very focused on community, but all the decisions that we make are intended to not usually just benefit one person, but benefit the whole community.
We also felt the word caring was pretty important because, you know, you talk about kindness and those kinds of things. And, and we, I feel anyway, that everyone that I've met and talked to, they really do have that caring attitude and they want to do good, kind things. And so.
Oh, we could also mention, we took, we took out learning our, the whole child. Like we thought it was important to include that we're not just focused on academics, but the whole child. But then we thought about that probably shouldn't go in our mission because we feel there's still opportunities for that, but maybe it could go in our vision.
Thank you. Next group.
We came up with Eatonville Schools shape lifelong learners by encouraging highest levels of student.
We came up with Eatonville Schools shape lifelong learners by encouraging highest levels of student growth for academic opportunities, strong relationships, and.
Nice. You wanna say about that? Your team?
Great. I think, I will say, my, I think my, my primary focus was the, the very first part, Eatonville Schools. I love the, the, the community, the togetherness, the, the we. Um, I work for Washington State Patrol. Our mission starts out, Washington State Patrol makes a difference every day. It's what we do. We are making a statement that this is who we are. When you read that, there's no question as to what Eatonville Schools do. It's right there in this, this, the start. We shape learners. And so that, that to me, that was really powerful. And I think we, that started us off strong and it got us to the point where at the end we were just, it was semantics. We had the, the values there. We had the, the, the basics there. We're like, okay, well, do we inspire? Do we shape? Do we, you know, what do we do? It's what we do was already there. So I think we had a really good discussion about, you know, who we are as Eatonville School District, what we do. And in reality, that, that represents, I think, represents Eatonville really well.
Could almost just put a period after it.
Like drop.
I do like the Eatonville Schools. I like that. I like that.
Yeah. Strong.
I think it's interesting, um, how even though we're in three different groups, there were the same, a lot of the same things did come up. So it shouldn't be terribly hard to now put this all together. Opportunities showed up in all three of them. You know, the idea of a community, you know, showing up in all three and.
Lifelong learners.
Yeah, lifelong learners. And so, and then the whole idea about ongoing, uh, you know, like growth achievement, you know, uh, so the way we phrase is we felt like it's individual accountability that we're all accountable. I mean, that's, that's the gift of life, right? It's lifelong your customers. And so you get to live your life and, and try to, you know, accomplish any life that you hope to accomplish. But that you, you do so with others around you, with that caring environment, that, that encouraging environment, you know, that allows for that to happen. And so we thought it was just interesting how it's, it's, we're, we're focused on each individual. As Dylan has said, you know, not just like moving people through numbers, how when you graduate, okay, goodbye. You know, but it's, it's focused on the individual, but we're all collectively helping each individual to, to achieve that. And so anyway, we thought that was pretty cool.
Well, we talked a lot about how, um, our current reality, we feel like we've got a strong community, but we feel like our vision would include more about those community partnerships. And we're not really educating families currently. We are educating students is our mission. Um, we do a better job of educating students, bringing in that support from community and families. But, um, just, you know, narrow our lane a little bit. Our current reality is we're very student centered.
So good point. Those other layers come.
They'll, they'll.
Rest of it.
They do come through and that, but I think we have a lot of, um, work to, to include that in our mission to work toward more of the, um, providing opportunities for families and communicator, community members to be potentially more involved in schools. But our current reality is we are inspiring those respectful lifelong learners, provide opportunities for growth. We have a caring community.
Yeah.
I don't think our role is, is giving the opportunities for our, for community members and families. That's.
I, I think, um, you know, when we think of mission, I know we talk about where we are or, you know, what we do well or whatever. But to us, it felt like, you know, the mission really is why do we exist? Like, why do we exist? And in the end, as you said, student achievement, student achievement and beyond.
And beyond.
Student achievement and beyond.
Well, I think Cory had a really good point. Um, Cory, do you wanna share about why achieve, the word achievement was important to you versus growth?
Because there is no achievement without growth. I think, I think achievement to me is something that is more lofty than just growth. I think when someone says, oh, you're growing, it can be. You can, you can take it as a, as a slight, I guess, but like, I think achievement is something that you set your sights on and it's more of a, a higher goals.
Uh, I, I tend to agree with that. And then our students had really, um, were really passionate about the idea of students, family, and community. Um, I hear what you were saying around that being our vision, that that's. How do you, how do you guys feel about that, Cory? When you were listening to your dream? Did that make sense? That that might be something we put in the vision versus the mission? Okay.
I'm gonna change your principle. Yeah.
That's great.
Families and community members. I just don't know that that's where our service is right now.
So would we think to add the word achievement or replace the word growth in number three with the word achievement? Would that?
We actually batted that around back and forth and we liked.
Oh. Oh, they have.
Okay.
Okay. But yeah, but because we had.
Those calls she played on, I was thinking. Student classroom.
Oh, they don't. No, sorry.
Yep. Student. We did have it in there, in one of our seven drafts, so.
Like I said, semantics.
Yeah. Yeah.
A long debate.
Yes, and we are great with achievement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I agree with Cory.
Throw it out there, Jane.
I was just gonna say that I'm leaning towards a lot of stuff that I like in number three because you spoke so eloquently. But.
We found the micro part.
Yeah.
It is, in fact, my job to be eloquent.
We, we talked about like trying to have something that's not too long because we want people to be able to remember and recite it. So I almost just wanna like take off a few of the extra like words in there, um, just to make it shorter. But I really like it. Like if we said something like, um, highest levels of student achievement through opportunities, relationships, and community and just take out, you know, academic and strong, then it makes a little bit shorter, but I still feel like says what you want.
Do.
Yeah. Sean and I were talking and we thought that it should say the first sentence from three, Eatonville Schools shape lifelong learners. And then jump to number two, through opportunities for growth in a caring, community-focused environment.
And combine.
If you combine those two, I think it hits.
Hey, 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 you completely eliminated all of number one.
Number one.
We were just telling, we were just telling these guys, okay, now we've done all this work, now we're gonna have to fight for it.
But like, but what Ms. Crower said, those are all the same key phrases.
Yeah. Lifelong learners, um, the growth or achievement.
The only thing we might wanna consider is some more, um, accountability.
Yes, I think accountability was something that we, we feel like is strong. Yeah.
We would love to see accountability as something.
Is that what you said Kylie to do? Is that?
No.
No. Okay, I misheard.
Lifelong learners.
Okay, so what are we taking?
And then do.
The first part of number three.
Eatonville Schools.
Shape lifelong learners.
Do you wanna leave the word recycle out? Leave it in.
Oops.
Undetermined at this point.
And then what are we adding to this?
And then start on number two, it through. Yeah.
I think that's a great bare, you know, bare bones. And then now semantics of adding additional words that may be missing from number one, please.
I will say, I think, I think a lot of this is gonna come down to how do we want this to come off? Because if we, if we go with the, the intro of our group, it is very strong. It is very direct. It is very upfront, which that's what I like. I like establishing boundaries. I like establishing, for lack of a better word, authority. That is part of my job. But I really do think that Eatonville Schools should be the authority of academics in Eatonville. And so I like.
With you. I think when, so I've seen, um, different, you know, school reader boards around the, you know, the, around the communities in this whole Pierce County. And I think the word inspire goes pretty strong. I mean, what could we consider Eatonville Schools inspire?
That was one of, one of our 12 options.
I, I think shape is to look at low and things like that.
Yeah, right. Inspire.
Inspire is.
Calling you to.
Yeah. Inspires that curiosity. It's like.
Opportunities for.
It's that, I think inspires, I, I think it's a stronger word.
I've seen you. By providing.
For three or four together.
Do we think that the word respectful represents who we are today? Or?
Is it opportunities, of course, out of vision? That there's a vision. Yeah. Might be in the vision right now. Growth in a caring, community. Do we want, instead of growth, do we wanna look at achievement or accountability in there? I think those. Like achievement.
We actually said growth and achievement because we felt.
Yeah, opportunities for. Opportunities.
But that's.
Say that part again? You wanted to add or replace. A word. Accountability. Did you say that?
I think achievement or accountability, um, either of those words would be, I think.
Which is.
That's inspired, like one, there's sort of opportunities for.
Yeah, but sometimes if you, you know, use the. For growth and achievement?
For growth and achievement. Yeah.
I think it is. I think.
Because if you is a period or a colon, then you could start. At a box. And then all the work together.
Then a few more words.
My, I will say, I, I'm starting to take an issue with the community-focused environment.
I, yeah. I think so, too.
Only, only because if you were to go around and ask teachers, are you focusing on the community in your class?
Yeah.
That's.
Can we put respectful relationships?
Growth, support, achievement, and.
If we go to, with the inspire life, is it too similar to what we currently have? Or does that not matter if it?
I think it matters.
I don't think there's anything wrong with.
Okay.
Yeah. It was pretty good when we did it last time.
We liked it. It lasted awhile. Can we go back to Cory? Can you say your part again?
I know it's.
So he says about not liking the caring, community-focused environment, but can we do respectful relationships?
So growth, achievement.
Through, through respectful relationships.
Instead of.
Yeah.
Eatonville Schools inspire lifelong learners through opportunities for growth and achievement through respectful relationships.
Oh, I like that. Okay.
Yeah, like, even just. I really like.
Yeah. But then I've got two threes in there.
Okay, I'm gonna agree with Kylie. We need to put a colon after learners and eliminate through and put, um, like providing. Eatonville Schools inspire lifelong learners, colon, providing opportunities for growth and achievement through respectful relationship.
Or however.
Or however. We've got, that way, we've got that, that really upfront power statement and then this is how we do it. Sorry, semi-colon.
Thank you. I was gonna say. Who got an English teacher in here?
Well, semi-colon, we should have another subject, but we'll figure that out. And then again, Sheila? Oh, I think we need another subject. Here is a semi-colon.
Once you know the rules of. It's okay.
Can we do it without the semi-colon?
You can put the word by in.
Yeah. By providing, yeah.
I like.
Respectful relationships.
By. If you went anywhere in our district, teachers.
I just wanna. I got full relationships. We don't have the word community in there.
Is there a difference between respectful and caring?
What was that, Jim?
I think.
Is there a difference between respectful and caring? Do you wanna put respectful and caring relationships or do we care? Is it, is it big enough as an item value?
We care about caring.
Do you think relationships focus, I mean, encompass this community?
I was gonna throw another wrench in there is, is if, if, if we're putting, we're putting ourselves in a box if we say we are providing opportunities for growth and achievements through respectful and caring, essentially saying relationships is the only way we're doing this.
Oh, good point.
So, so.
It limits you, yeah.
It, it limits you. Just, I would just be wary of that. I do have to go. I get to work at night.
You're doing so well.
I hope so, too.
I hope it's uneventful.
For everyone's sake.
Number one.
I could provide this wrench right before we.
Can we just go back to ours?
We just said that over here. Why not?
Just take off through respectful and caring relationships.
Put a period.
In, in, uh, respecting and caring environment.
Say just period right there.
Eatonville Schools.
This, or you wanna add? Oh, that's good.
In a, in a respectful, caring environment. And respectful and caring community, you know, respectful and caring.
I like environment.
Environment?
Yeah, I think environment's good.
Like that? That sound good? Need another change? Or take some other words in our, the others? As to quote the mission. Are you gonna be able to do it?
Wait, have you ever had to do that?
Uh, yeah, we got called out. And we all. August, we got called out.
Oh, okay. Over memorizing.
Yeah. At our speaker, the PLC. I think it brings me as a community member, but I'm really curious to know from the people who are in, within that academic classroom and all of you people in the room, how does that read to you? Does that read as what you feel like Eatonville currently is doing?
I asked myself that question a lot when I read it. Is, is this what I do in my classroom? And what I strive for? Never.
I was gonna say strive.
Yeah, it is. And I think.
Yeah, I think. Have what you currently do.
Right. But I think.
Striving for.
It's the best part of what we currently.
Exactly what I said.
Yeah, it's like my underlying, what I want. Like, do I, kids learn science, that'd be super great, but I want them to want to learn and I want them to have opportunities. And that's the under, that's what I want.
So this is a good, this would be an umbrella that we could hang our hat under. I mean, forever is we, this is what you do in the community. This is what we do as a school board. That's what we do as parents. This is what we do, student to student. So this is a good, this would be an umbrella that we could hang our hat under, I mean forever, is we, this is what you do in the community, this is what we do as a school board, that's what we do as parents, this is what we do student to student, is it something that we feel like is transferable?
It's, it's sorry, right? I, I just wanna challenge, I wanna put our students on the spot.
Yep, I was gonna say.
We're in a respectful and caring environment. Doing that currently.
You better answer right. Well.
A lot of pressure.
Kinda going off of what Ms. Mother said, I think definitely. This is what we always want to have, and is it always on an everyday basis, is this gonna happen? No, but at the, but I think there's more times than not, this is what happens.
I agree, absolutely.
So, I would agree with that, like, um, if we think back to one of our previous meetings, it was either Lauren or Sarah said, try not to put any of your own personal things, don't let it overshadow. Like the whole of what usually happens, because I would agree that overall, that this happens, I mean, of course, we can each probably think of a personal thing that may be overshadowing it.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Or is the desire, yeah, the striving, the striving.
Because it's never gonna be a hundred percent.
Because you can't let bad days over.
Absolutely.
Any other revisions too late, or?
I personally like respectful environment and not respectful and caring environment.
Why?
I just feel like respect's more important than caring. Because these teachers do, are respectful and caring towards their students, but they're not. Getting that reciprocated.
It's not reciprocated.
And I feel like respectful, this is just the main priority.
Take off and carry?
I know, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and one, I really appreciate that you, as a student, want to see more respect. For your teachers, um, but I think if we leave the caring in there, it's a good reminder for us as adults.
Yeah.
To show care. Because, I mean, of course, we want your respect, but we also need to show that caring in order to gain and earn that respect. But is there a way that you could emphasize, or do you think maybe the emphasizing can come in, um, some of the ways that we're going to implement this vision? How do we teach students to be more respectful, what are some of the things that we're going to do to help implement that?
No idea right now.
I don't know, what do you guys think about leaving the caring?
I like leaving the caring because respectful, it, I feel is more of the authority part of it, which that needs to be in it. Um, but the caring part is also being on the same basis with your students, yes, I am your teacher, or yes, I'm your principal, and you should. Respect me, I guess, uh, but I also am a human, and you are a human, and we have emotions, and we're not, we are not above you, we are with you.
And I think that hits on the relationships piece, we're not using that word, but caring implies that there's a, a human relationship.
Yeah.
I, I can tell you, Ron and I did some in-class stuff with student boys, and I saw that. Respect and caring in those classrooms, when we were in those classrooms, so, so I felt that that, I feel that that really does happen, as an outsider.
The other words that were coming, and I'm not, or nurturing. But doesn't have, I like caring, but that was the other word that came.
So I'm looking at the clock, are you guys in for, we have a vision still?
I do, I like.
We can do it.
Can, can I ask one thing, we didn't, we don't have the word academic in there, we talked a lot about academic in our group. Academic achievements.
I'm good with putting academic achievement, for growth and academic achievement.
And I'm okay without it, I just don't want it to not.
Yeah.
You know, because I do think we have a lot of academic success.
Yeah.
Does that keyhole us though, I mean, can't we have achievement across a broadband of areas without just being academic? I mean, that's a community member saying that, not somebody in the system, so.
I think. There's some criticism, not specifically in Eatonville, but of public school in general, that they've lost the focus on academic achievement, and so, I like it, because I think it says, we're still focused.
We're here about, yeah.
I mean, you could bail them back and say student achievement.
I'm okay with, I'm, I'm okay with academics, I think it's, I think it's appropriate, because it does have growth, and that could apply to all those other areas that you're talking about, and then really, we're about growth in a lot of areas, and we're about academic.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you could look at growth in that way, yeah.
Other comments?
So if that's our focus, do we want to put that in the place of growth?
I'm, I'm apprehensive about putting academic in there, only because. I don't feel like some of us only focus on academics, and I'm, and, and to me, like, when I read mission, I can't help but think that that is still where we want to be, even though we know that that's where we are, and we're using present language. I feel like some people are going to read it and think that that's where we're going.
This is where we are currently.
Oh, yeah, and I know that, and you know that, because we're, we, we talk about it a lot, but, you know, even when we were talking about it at the beginning of the meeting, you know, sometimes we go back and forth, we have to clarify, what was mission, what was vision, was that where we were going, or was it where we were at? So I just worry that as an outs, outside person reading it, they might think that it's not where we are, like, they may not realize that, like, so that's why I'm worried to put academic in there. Because I don't want it to be so focused on that. No, I mean, you can, you can still definitely leave it on there, like, I'm, I'm open, I'm just sharing my thought on.
Even with growth too, the way they define it.
Yeah.
It's all areas.
Growth could be all other areas.
Okay, that's true. Okay, well, and I, and I think more people probably do want academic, which is totally fine, so I, I get, I get what you're saying, having growth in there, could apply to other areas. So, yeah, that's fine, you can, you can leave it in there.
Yeah.
I think it just elevates a little bit what, what, another, that, that could be a, a mission statement, um, after school program, or, uh, Boys and Girls Club, you know, that, that just elevates it a little bit differently.
We're here to educate.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, Jane, though.
Yeah.
I'm saying, um.
Well, and I wonder.
Can you say educational achievement then, rather than academic?
Or like Jason, student achievement, because I'm thinking of, we have some programs in our district where academic achievement isn't the growth, isn't the goal for those students who. You know, they're not gonna read, they're not going to, you know, meet some of these academic goals that we have for them, but they will succeed in other ways, where, you know, they're learning some life skills and things like that, so.
Right, just with achievement. A little more inclusive.
Or, would, would student growth, student growth and academic achievement, does that cover both, or is it still too narrow if you? I mean, we're adding more words.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, that's what they.
Does that, reflecting back, it was.
Right.
I'm like, we really do want our kids to have some basic skills of academics.
Absolutely.
And I think given our. Students that show growth in every other way, they do pick up some academics too.
Right, I just wonder, sometimes people think of academic achievement and have this bar, you know, and, oh, well, they didn't, well, some aren't gonna hit this bar that our society places. So, does student achievement fit with, like, when you read that, as a, as a parent, does that mean academic to you, or what, like, what does that say?
Um, it, it means, to me, like, what you're saying, that we see that all students can grow, sometimes they might not all achieve the same thing.
Okay. And still, but you.
I want you to focus on academic.
What if it was providing opportunities for academic growth and student achievement? Just switching.
Well, but I think, going back to what Cory said, you can, you can show a little bit of growth, but achievement means you've set a goal, and that you've attained it, so.
And to earn credit, you have to make academic.
Yes.
It's kind of like meeting standards.
You have to meet some standards.
But.
Let's do the other one and revisit this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do this all day.
Does anybody need a break?
No.
So everybody knows it's the exact same process, but now for the vision.
I don't know. I think we need to come back.
Six, five, a break?
What do you guys think?
Are you guys up for finishing it off, or are you ready to call it?
It would be the exact same process, but. It took about an hour. It took about an hour, so it's.
Well, we'll have to re, either refine the process, I, I mean, the question is. Do you want to be a part of, do you want to gather again, or? Should we try to do it in fifteen minutes?
Yes.
I wonder, could we just do it as a whole group and not do all the little breakups?
Thank you.
That's what happened.
Just jump in and go.
What? Try that.
Certainly try it.
Let's see what we can do in ten minutes.
As a whole group.
All right, okay, let's do it.
I think we're gonna have to do it in small diversity, ten minutes.
Ten minutes, and then so longer, and then throw it up?
Okay.
Next, so you.
Okay.
Tool, I wish, I wonder, like, or you can.
How are you guys doing?
All right.
You need to go.
So vision is why everything's just. Prepare the. But vision is.
We want to do it, right, where.
What we want.
Where we want to have.
Where we want to first. The families and communities, right? Where was our first statement? Yeah. That's right.
Oh, make sure of that.
So, I think, um. I'll just hear from Lauren.
This new final draft.
Oh, I don't know if it is.
These are our work.
I'm looking at.
But now I feel like.
Oh, yeah.
Respectful.
Thinking.
Kind of planning for the future, how we're gonna accomplish that mission.
So vision and.
How are we gonna get Eatonville schools to inspire lifelong.
Yeah, it's got a little child.
How are we gonna get like?
Yeah.
Oh, man. And dessert, yeah.
If you want some, bring it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's to make our goals, so that's because, so to make this become a now.
So I think, I think like you would rather.
This new family.
We strive to embrace our community, to support self, it's not, it's not actually in this. Respectful.
Yeah. No, these?
Yeah.
No, no, I wrote them down, I do, yeah, I wrote them down. I, I know these, but I thought you were talking about earlier.
No, I got this, so, no, this. I know we don't like to follow child, but we like the idea of it, so I want those, if anybody. Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
You write ones, did you?
Well, I like, I like number three to bet, I mean, four to pass, but, um, yeah, I struggle with. I don't know all the verbiage.
Yeah.
Well, and that's kind of what I heard, then I'm listening to you guys talk, and then before you, I go, we are all in to grow respectful self.
And, yeah.
To become well rounded.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I like some of this stuff before, but, um.
Did you rewrite again?
Never, no, no, we're. You're gonna rewrite it.
They have. They're probably asleep.
And I don't know.
Where are we? Yeah, yeah, she would.
This is how we do it. Oh, all right, this was. Could you change the slide to the vision slide? Could you change the slide to the vision one?
And you can see what we wrote and then just.
Oh, you already typed it in today?
So we've got, we've got a baseline to start with, now we can pick yours part, we don't have to have our.
We use the word accountable, this is the other word.
Oh, good.
I like accountability, I like that, okay.
This is what you want it?
No, no.
They were really techie and wrote it right into the, so go down.
Down one more.
I'm on the computer, I'm not.
This is what happens when you put a Mac.
If you just hit down there.
Windows device. Here? Yeah, there you go, I can see it, okay.
Nice.
Vision.
Strive to embrace our community. Strive and raise our community.
I don't know.
Do you think school does work?
How do we say that? Oh, yes.
That makes more sense.
I think so, I think that's teacher speak.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Is there a word that we can use to describe that, because we really like it, but we agree that the word is not whole child, yeah.
But I think if you just, whole child, it's.
Cause like, we want to support.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, putting like, you know, social emotional.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Versus half a child.
Right, that's what I said, that some people might think, what are we gonna do, cut them in half, like, no, we don't do that.
That's not our vision.
That's not how we build those caring and respectful relationships.
That's why I shouldn't be out at eight thirty. Whatever comes.
Can I make a suggestion based on this one?
I.
On number one, we strive to include, because I think, um, one of the things that we had a lot of conversation around in the mission, and you guys mentioned that it might be a vision statement, we try to, in, uh, we strive to include. Students, families, and community. Um, yep. How would we add that, strive to include students, family, and community? In creating support system, I don't know, I, I don't know how to do that, but I'm just saying, if we could do.
I like include, strive to include our community. Or include students, families, and community.
Yes.
Strive to include.
Students, families, and communities, in, I don't know, it's creating accountable students who are prepared citizens for the future, or something like that.
Yeah, fast, I like that, I'd like to see that up there.
Well, then go.
I'm actually not.
Oh, thanks.
Keep going.
I strive to include students, families, and community in creating accountable students who are prepared citizens for any future.
Say that again?
And creating, it probably isn't the right word, but there's another word, like, not producing, not creating, I don't know, encouraging, strengthening, I don't know.
Can we, uh, consider empower as opposed to include?
I like empower.
Empower, yeah.
Oh, that is good.
Yes.
So I like inspire.
Yeah.
I think that's what I was talking. Yeah, she's become empowered.
Yeah, you did.
All right.
Be packing it away, but I'm gonna.
We're gonna revise.
I think.
I, I, I was starting to write one out, but we didn't really have time to like, talk about it as a whole group, so I can share what I have, but I don't know if they'll agree, or.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah, all right, so all community members will respectfully support the growth as a whole child. Um. And then tell, tell me.
Um, did you say all community members will respectfully?
Yeah.
And then what did they?
Will respectfully support the growth. Of the whole child. Which will contribute to. The success of everyone in the Eatonville community.
Oh, I use community twice. I don't like that.
It's hard when you're like. I know, yeah. This is like still in rough form.
No, that's okay. There wasn't much time.
You can say stakeholders.
Not mine. Not mine.
Because stakeholders don't have to just be teachers. Yeah, we don't have one because ours got thrown out last time.
You guys really defeated, so we can jump on ours right away. Teamwork, make the dream go forward.
No sour grapes over here. They're gonna take a sweet.
What are your thoughts? What do you got going on? This is where we wanna go, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of how we bring it to pass. We're starting to add some bones to the skeleton. Skeleton. Right, now we're starting to put some flesh on it.
Do we wanna revise one or two, or do we wanna have a third?
Right, are we?
Brownies girl.
Yeah, I'm not gonna strive to empower. We're gonna do it. We're just gonna do it. There is no.
We were doing that before.
Now we're doing it. Now we're doing it.
So we're looking at one or two.
Are we reducing um? Fosters.
Generate, produce, design, make, fabricate, fashion. Manufacture. Lay the foundation. Towers to families. So we want. One or two. I have a wondering, when I think about how far our reach is as a school district. Do we really have the reach to empower families and the whole community as a school district?
I think it it you can if you say that um we empower all of these to the end of helping the students achieve. If you push it, if you if you point it back to empowering all stakeholders any way we can to the end of making sure that that energy then comes back, those efforts that come back, you know, to make sure that we support each student to be the best they can be. I think if you do that, you get away with it.
I think also if if we wanna keep that, then it's a matter of actually doing it. We actually have to bring in Kurt's Pharmacy into the school or Cruisers and then and then once they get there and then we also have to bring in the families. We can't just can't just always rely on sporting events or the every morning announcements to reach out to the students. It has to be or to the families. It has we have to be like, hey, come to the school. Let's.
And I think the chat, yeah, I think this is important because this is our vision. Maybe this isn't what we are doing now, but I I think our community is integral. They they pay for this facility. Um, wi- without our community, this school does not exist and we do need to empower families. If are we doing it now? Probably not, but we need to. We need to give them the supports and scaffolds so they can support their students.
But when you do, you see seventy five people come for the transportation for them. You see seventy people last night. You see how you see thirteen thirty surveys and you see uh how many.
Twenty people coming to all these meetings.
You you might have said this because I might have missed it. Did you say everything here kind of comes full circle, like the entire community is helping with the students at the school and and in turn we end up elevating the community.
Yes.
Yeah, you just come back and forth. You know, you you empower all stakeholders to empower, you know, individual student, each and every student, which then empowers and builds a community and just kind of keeps going. It just keeps going.
Well, and the schools are the heart of the community. So much happens that everybody comes.
Particularly in these in small school districts.
Yeah. So I don't know how to encapsulate it out loud, but basically that's.
Yeah.
I almost wonder, we have another meeting on Thursday next week.
Is it Thursday this weekend?
Yeah. So I wonder if, no, it won't be this, but I just wonder if we need to have another look at that point with the consultants and get their.
Before. I'm sorry, could we? Could we send it to the.
Absolutely. Oh, yes. They have. These slides and.
Being virtual. It's just an hour.
We got a bunch of, we got.
Six o'clock. That's what I saw.
Yeah. Yeah, it's from six P M to seven thirty, Thursday, November sixteenth, virtual. And they'll be in Dolby for the last conference.
Yeah, and there's.
So.
Yeah.
And there's programs in the evening.
Do we wanna? Their workshops. Do you guys have a, do we wanna narrow down to one or two? One. How are you guys feeling?
You know, this is the most important thing we're doing because the vision statement is what everybody should memorize and it should control. When when you guys make a decision, it should be based on what you see here. We have to be careful not to rush through this one too.
Right, yeah. We don't wanna just slap it.
Yeah.
Together to be.
Especially after all those words.
We don't wanna regret it.
Yeah.
We wanna commit to another time.
Without the calendars.
Here's the biggest problem. We we also have to get this done because they have to have it turned in and so we can get it done by the end.
So they have designers that are packaging it. I think you guys may have heard that, but it takes six weeks at least for them to put something together once it's all finalized on our end as a crew.
I'd rather roll it out right in February than rush it to happen in January.
Yeah, I I guess we don't have to stick to the timeline that was proposed. We don't wanna. Unless the board feels we are obligated with the.
What timeline? Why aren't they here for like such an important piece of this?
Well, I think primarily from what we gathered from them today, they felt like since they would be the only ones virtual that it would be, I think the word clunky might have been used.
And it would be more of an interruption with we must be doing this.
Technology.
Plus, they must have a lot of confidence in us.
I do feel like personally, when I like looked through so many different iterations and wordings, like things start to not mean as much. And so.
It's harder.
Coming back with a fresh set of eyes and having like thought on it, because when we wrote these, like I know that at the time that we wrote these, we thought that these were like good. And when we were reading that.
Now we thought, where did these?
I'm not saying that they're not good.
That's a great point. Yeah, I don't think we need to feel privileged.
We wanna take the product.
We do. If it's gonna be on the wall for the next five to ten years, we wanna feel proud about it.
I mean, to kill Mockingbird, it was thirty nine rotations by Ernest Hemingway.
Is everybody okay with meeting, setting another meeting perhaps and coming back?
I think we'll do better with fresh minds. Yeah, I do. I agree with you too. I think we'll do better. But I think at least we've got, and we can go away and we can kind of like keep looking at the mission statement, which I think we did pretty well. But we can just now say, okay, the mission is what we subscribe to. It's why it exists. And now our vision is like, okay, but what about the next five years? What's our vision? You know, like to to get to that next level. And then we can come back, you know, with with. I believe.
So kind of our next steps, aside from another meeting that.
We might need to ask for this.
Yeah, the board can attend. This was the date that Lauren and Sarah were able to offer. It was um like we talked about, it's Thursday. But I don't know if there's dates that everybody has now that we could offer to Sarah and Lauren to see if we could shift things around or if we wanna. How do we wanna proceed? Sally had an idea of a Wednesday late start morning prior to.
An hour past my bedtime.
You mean like the fifteenth?
What?
I didn't pick a day. I was just drawing out the idea of early versus late evenings.
Yeah.
Minds are fresher.
Yep.
I could get to seven o'clock start even. Earlier than seven. I don't know what you guys are saying as well.
They can do a really good job.
So we will we'll we'll put out some dates for that once we get clarity on who was available. Morning, good noon, evening.
I can do it.
What all about?
Are we talking virtual or in person? Do we like in person?
Oh, I think. I think.
Next Wednesday?
Oh, yeah.
You're out next Wednesday is at the sixteenth.
They leave Thursday.
I could do next Wednesday.
Do we do we leave with Thursday morning?
Thursday mornings.
Thursday morning.
Yeah, we'll all be whining because we have to leave super early Thursday morning, but that'll make us keep our.
So we're talking about Wednesday morning.
Oh, Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning.
That's what we were talking about.
I'm good with mornings. Come on, take one for the team.
Get my kid ready for school.
That's a good point.
I feel might be able to.
Okay.
Handle it.
They don't have to be there till.
Really early, but I'll like. Probably figure it out.
Okay. What time do we wanna shoot? At least set it out and see how many people can come?
Seven, do we think so?
Seven A M on Wednesday.
Wednesday the fifteenth. Fifteen.
Are we trying to see if Lauren and Sarah can attend or is this just?
Yeah.
I think we'll just finish up what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh.
I'm just whining.
Alright, does anyone have the seventeen opinion on the date and time that we're gonna go forward on?
So do I just send out the calendar right now and we're?
So that's to finish the vision.
Yes.
Yeah. And then you can still do the great banding.
On the sixteenth.
With Lauren and Sarah.
And that'll wrote back in the portrait of graduate work.
And we actually still are intervening.
Yes.
Yes.
We actually.
And and we have the homework that's possibly working through a vision statement to bring.
That'd be lovely. They're all gonna be like super unique also. Some of them are gonna be.
Fresh thoughts, yeah. We're gonna reinvent the wheel. We go.
Go for it.
We need another one.
Okay. Uh, we will move on to.
Yeah, so the only the only thing I wanted to add would say keeping with our effort to get all kids to school is that that continues forward. Um, because all there are setbacks where you'll have someone who was in the process there pretty far and then something happened and changed that. So I've kind of abandoned just an exact date. But what we'll see is more and more so well, see fewer cancellations, more and more kids to school. And then um and and you know that it does appear that, you know, on the near horizon, we will be able to not only get all kids to school, but in moving forward out of the forty one, there's about ten still in place that are currently moving forward. Others are just kind of on hold. And so, you know, the goal is to get every kid to school and then get enough more that we can actually let the mechanics just mechanic. There'll be much better jobs, you know, than have. And um and then get substitutes so that when those who are drivers are not well, are ill, that we have someone to cover that. So that we we feel like we're we're getting closer and closer to that. Then the only other report is that last night, uh, you know, huge thanks to to all of you uh for the effort to make the the community levy forum a success. And we had about seventy people there and we just gave so many ideas, two hundred and two responses on the website that Allison created.
Wow.
In addition to all of those who provided additional information last night. And um it does appear that it keeps uh supporting us, coming together to help us, you know, get things right. Um, so that's my report.
Thank you. Uh, student reports.
So I'll just I'll just start with sports like I always do. Uh, football is getting ready um to take on Royal uh once again. Uh, we will be heading to Royal City this time. Um, and even though we're ranked sixteen and they ranked one, we we have actually a really good chance, we think. If we don't win, we think that it'll be the closest game that they have had in quite some time. Um, but we really think that we are able to compete and take home a victory. Um, winner sports is starting up next week. Um, and the bus for basketball season is definitely floating in the air. Um, between boys basketball and the girls basketball, because there's always a little bit of the little butting of the heads and because the girls team is was doing really good last year and then they're supposed to do really good this year. Uh, and the boys basketball is um on the uprise as well. Um, they did really good last year as well. And they think we have a lot of scores this year um from deep. Uh, we might not have the size like with Kyle Cox and Shay Brandon that we had last year, but we got a lot of people that can get to the basket and and uh get the ball in it. Uh, we have a veterans assembly tomorrow. Um, we have a guest speaker that's coming. Um, I don't know who the guest speaker is. Um, actually, I don't think anybody really knows who the guest speaker is other than Mr. Muller. Um, because he's the one that organized um that. So I wouldn't say it's a surprise, but it is a surprise for us. Um, it is um some veteran, I believe, um, that's gonna come and talk and talk about his experiences. And the A P tests are already getting talked about, which might be good for some people and might not be good for other people. Um, the payments are due tomorrow, I think. Or the or yeah, tomorrow. Um, and then that's just one more step to continue. Um, and then is today. I think today was quarter.
Quarter two started.
Yeah, quarter two started today. So it's kind of like a kind of like a fresh start, but not really a fresh start for everybody. And so we're we're pushing.
So we.
I have no comments.
Alright, um, or? Um, I wanna thank everybody, um, almost guaranteeing everybody here for the experience I just had tonight. I've never been a part of anything quite like this, like my husband and I, we did our religion statement type of thing, but nothing this collaborative. So um it was truly like listening to everybody and everybody's comments were very inspiring to me as a business owner. So I just wanna thank everybody for being here. It's a a really like this is probably one of our highlights for the school board for the last couple of years with being a part of this. If I don't do anything else for four years, this is actually very, or for two years, it's very cool. So I'm very like happy to be part of this.
Um, I agree that this is the important work that we do with our community and keeping and the reason it's so inspiring is that we're all focusing on children and what's best for our kids, and I love that. But we owe a big thanks to all these individuals over here for the hard work to make this happen. And um really accommodating the board of being part of this process because it is really wonderful to be working with our community members and that's what makes all the difference. So thank you, Sally, Allison, Ashley, Jay for that.
Yeah. Awesome.
And I also that because I know that um, you know, the more that we are, you know, involved in it. I know that we all have busy schedules as well as you do. And so I think that the sacrifice that they have been on this team has made. That everyone on this team has made is amazing and I can't um say enough good things about them and about what the work that's been accomplished so far and the end product that we will have will be. Something we'll be very proud of and be able to put on the wall and and be able to to live out. And I'm just, um, I'm feeling really, really good about that. And I think that. That we've learned a lot. We've learned a lot about process and how um how to deal with things and everybody's done in just such an amazing manner. Good. So, thank you. And no other comments, then we will end this meeting at eight fifty-five.
It's really. We're now evening too. I mean, everything sounds, I guess time change is killing everyone. Early board meeting. We used to go till 11:30.
It's been a while. Yes, I do.
Construction days.
And those will never happen again. Not as long as I'm in.